All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is the May 30th, 2023 Washington County Zoning Board of Adjustments and Planning Board Meeting. We'll start with the Zoning Board of Adjustments meeting first. If we could, staff, please have roll call.
Roll call?
Roll call, please, yes.
Absolutely. Joe Manord, absent. Maria Banks?
Here.
Lisa Miller?
Here.
Jay Piercy, not here yet. Neil Helm?
Here.
Philip Humbard?
Here.
Lorna Shekelford?
Here.
Got it.
Okay, so we have five. We do have a quorum, so we'll go ahead and move forward the meeting. Again, this is the Zoning Board of Adjustments meeting. The agenda is as stated, Barnes and Landers variance setbacks and Joshua Good variance are the two items for the zoning board of adjustments. Any changes to that? Okay, any questions, comments from the board?
Seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
We got a motion for agenda approval, is there a second?
I'll second that.
We got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, first item is Barnes and Landers variance. Staff, if you would, please report.
Thank you. Uh, the, sorry, I'm getting over a sinus thing, seems to be going around. The Barnes and Landers variance is sought for a setback allowance to set a house where an existing partial foundation already exists and utilities already exist. The applicant can't move laterally in any direction because of existing septic utilities and overhead easements. Uh, we have no technical concerns or commentary from the public.
Thank you, sir. Any questions of staff from the board? If not, is the applicant here tonight or an applicant's representative? If you would, please come up, state your name for the record. Tell us a little bit about your project, sir.
Um, I'm Darryl Doyle.
If you would, sit down and...
I'm Darryl Doyle. Uh, I'm a surveyor. I was asked to do a lot line or a property split here. When I was going about the course, the man had started a project there to build this and he had a septic. And when I saw that, I shot it and I brought it to Sam. Sam says, we're gonna need to get a variance on that. So I'm going through that procedure now.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Anybody from the, uh, public want to speak to this item tonight? Okay, seeing none, I'll close it and bring it back to the board for action.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the Barnes and Landers variance setbacks.
Have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, sir. Next on the item, I'm sorry, the next item on the agenda is the Joshua Good variance. Staff, report, please.
Thank you. Um, a variance is sought to decrease road frontage from 100 feet to 60 feet south of Mineral Springs Road, where an existing 60-foot access utility easement exists. A tract is being split off, uh, to, to grant to the southern landowner, because they are essentially landlocked from their property. Two neighbors have spoken in opposition with concerns about drainage with Mineral Springs and, uh, potential for housing off the easement. No technical concerns on our end.
Thank you, appreciate that. Sam, did you have a statement you wanted to make on this one, please?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I'm there with me here. Uh, that is from Nathan Crouch, who is the applicant, uh, working for, uh, Blue and Associates. And it says, regarding the variance before the planning board tonight, I want to give a short description. Mr. Good is simply selling his neighbor an access to their property due to their like issue with, um, alternate access point to their like property. He is establishing a 60-foot access utility easement, double the width that is required. And the stated hardship as required by the county code is that this is all the road frontage Mr. Good has to offer. But this intention is to be a good like neighbor and by the creating the 60-foot wide like private road to the, uh, uh, southerly neighboring property, he is also limiting the numbers of future residences that can be occupied of this road without constructing a full county road. I believe Mr. Good will be in attendance, maybe. Uh, and unfortunately, he, Nathan, basically due to a medical procedure today, I will not be able to attend personally. But if you have any question, please let me know.
Thank you, appreciate that. Is the applicant here tonight? If you would, please come up, state your name and address for the record. Tell us a little bit about your project.
It was already on, okay. Um, so my name is Joshua Good. This property has been in my family for about 50 years. And so a neighbor came to us, my, I just recently took possession of this property. Um, so that track that you see on, on the image that goes out to Mineral Springs was a 60-foot road easement that was pre-established. The neighbors that just bought the other property, that large track in the area, um, had a access road coming to their property that there was no legal description or legal easement. So when they bought the property, um, they were coming up to closing and they approached me about possibly buying a legal easement. There were some struggles with, uh, with getting access. And, and so at that time, they came to me asking if there was an opportunity to just sell an easement. Now, in, in good faith, what I did not want to do was ever have to manage that property and manage that easement from my standpoint. So at that point right there, we decided that the best thing was to make it a track split, giving them easement. So that's what you're seeing right now, is essentially what we're trying to do is split off that three acres, creating it an easement to me, but that essentially it would just be easement to their access or to their property.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Did I explain that, okay?
Yeah, question, one question I had, and it's again, a letter from Nathan, so I apologize, but he stated something to the effect that you're gonna limit future development to keep it from being a county highway. Can you talk about that a little bit?
So, I don't exactly know what that was. Um, it's definitely something that we could enter into the agreement, but that's not anything that I had seen thus far. I think maybe what he's referring to is, is that the proposed applicant to purchase would like to limit it to a private drive rather than public use. So that's probably what he's referring to.
Yeah.
Yeah, is that, is that kind of what you're referring to?
Somebody smarter sitting next to me that's...
Okay.
Yeah, he's stating that they'll convert it to a public or a county road if there is further development.
Yeah, when it...
Sorry about that.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep, okay, appreciate it. Questions for the applicant?
Has that been used as an easement part?
Never, no.
This is brand new?
It was sold, so my grandfather sold, the easement that you're seeing, he had sold it to a neighbor probably 20 years ago or so, um, for a similar situation. Um, the easement never was, uh, brought into use. Um, so it's just kind of sat there for like legal description.
So no one's ever driven down this and used it as a point of access?
There's still trees there, yeah. It was never even cleared.
Other question?
So which, which part do you live on that you've taken possession of?
Um, so it's gonna be the large track. You see kind of the diamond coming out to the right-hand side of the screen. So we own that and we actually own two tracks. So there's a 29-acre track and then a 32-acre track. We own all of that. So it's a, it's a total of 62 acres. The split coming off would be three acres from north to south, I believe.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, appreciate it, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anybody from the audience that would like to address this request? If you would, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name's Carmen Reese and my address is 12823 Mineral Springs Road. That access is on the border of my property. And the neighbor that he is talking about, that he said he was going to sell it to in order to get an access, they do have a legal access that they have on the other side of my property. And so that would give them legal access to drive almost completely around my property. Um, and that particular neighbor has been, um, encroaching on the access that we gave them, um, already. And so I have concerns about that. So it's not that, they are not landlocked. They have access to their property on the other side. They don't need another access to go out on the other side of my property as well. Um, and in fact, I had, that neighbor has made our lives very difficult already and assaulted me, um, in my other neighbor's driveway. So, that's one concern that I have. Another concern that I have is broader than that. I'm concerned about that becoming a county road on Mineral Springs, off of Mineral Springs Road, because Mineral Springs already can't handle the traffic that is there. It's too narrow. The shoulders are eroding. I mean, there is no shoulder, but the sides of the road are eroding. It's very dangerous. There have been multiple accidents and especially right in that area, because that area is coming up a hill and around a corner. So, um, I don't think we need another road coming out. And, and if, since Mr. Good isn't certain whether or not there will be future development along that road, then that just adds to more, um, more traffic.
Thank you, appreciate it. Anybody else like to comment or make, please, if you would, come up, state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, uh, my name's Robert Stapp. I live at 12861 Mineral Springs Road. And this basically, I will reiterate my neighbor's comments, that there's already access to that property. So I don't see the purpose for needing a second access. Mineral Springs, as she said, very curvy. It's very dangerous. Even at our outlet, there's been several accidents that have occurred there that have been very tragic. So I don't understand why this is needed, to have access to a piece of property that already has an access to it. The original access has been there for something like 40 years and has been very adequate so far. So don't understand why this is that terribly necessary. So just want to put in my comments as well. Mineral Springs is, as, I don't know if you guys are familiar, I guess you are, I don't know, but they're very curvy type road. There's lots of blind spots in it as well. So just very concerned about the safety and also then just basically how many roads are gonna be put to access one piece of property? This, where does it stop? Uh, that's my big concern, basically, because I own 100 acres, yet I've not asked for access across anybody else's property. But, uh, it's one of those things that basically makes you wonder what's next, what's next, what's next? Because if they've already got the easement, why do they need a second one? So that's my comment.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to comment on this item? Okay, if not, I'll close it and bring it back to the applicant, if I could, please. Can you address, is there an existing access to this property now? Is it being vacated with this request or what, what can you add to that?
Great statement. So that was what I was thinking as, as they were addressing this. Um, and again, as I stated, when, when we first started this process, there was no legal easement. I have not seen a legal easement, okay? Then as far as the access that already exists there, I could put in a road tomorrow, because the easement already exists. My family and other neighbors have access to that easement. So as far as the road concerns, I hear that, but there's no need, and correct me if I'm wrong, to put in a road right now as far as, I, I didn't say that right. So as it sits right now, that could already become a road. Am I correct?
I, I don't know the answer to that, that's what I'm, I'm asking you.
Based off of the easement, right?
If there's not a, if there's not, so I guess I'll ask this of staff. Is there a legal dedicated easement to this property at this point?
There is.
Okay, is there any issue having more than one easement to a piece of property based on county regs?
No.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay.
So yes, if there's a legal easement there, that is correct.
And, and, and I guess, I, I wasn't speaking clearly. So what I was saying is the road that are, are the easement that already sits on my property. So there's the easement that we're looking at right there, we're requesting additional easement. But if you look, there's already a 60-foot easement from Mineral Springs Road along half of the length that we're looking to grant. So what we're requesting is the full length north to south. So as it sits right now, and I think that there was a couple of questions asked to me of if there's an existing road there already, um, before, is what I'm referring to. So what I'm saying is that as it sits right now with the county, I believe, and I could be wrong, that that could already be developed without sitting at this meeting. The question really is, is it going to be approved to grant the easement all the way from north to south? Does that make sense?
Okay, yes.
Did I answer your question?
Yes, sir, you did, thank you. Is that, that staff, is that an accurate statement?
I believe so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, appreciate the clarity.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Would you, okay, do you, staff, can you, so the, the question, go ahead.
I guess my question is if there's already an easement, but there's also already access, he's already got access, why would you have to do more access? Is my question.
He's just asking to an extend an existing access all the way to the back of the property. Is that accurate?
Uh, correct, in addition to, uh, transferring ownership of that tract consisting of the easement to the adjacent owner.
So it's technically a track split. The only reason it's a, considered a variance is because of the size of the road frontage is outside of...
It's 60 and it has to be like 100 by our ordinances, that's it. And if you see this, those are supposed to be on top of each other, so.
So we're really not concerned about the easement more, we're just concerned about the width of the easement.
We're talking about like the frontage, that's the whole thing.
That's the whole thing, yeah. That's kind of what I thought.
Okay, bring it back to the board. Punch the one next to it. Other one. There you go.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, it appears to me to be a moot point, because he could take a 30-foot easement off of that 60-foot or a, or a 60-foot off of a 60-foot, uh, county road, uh, anytime he wants to and be according to the rules. He comes, the, the 100-foot rule was established, I suspect, after this particular easement was, was put in, because it used to be a 60-foot easement that came off of it. Or a 30-foot could have come off of it if it were for one dwelling. 60-foot would be for two dwellings. But I don't, I don't see where we, that, uh, that we've got a, a rule within our, our, uh, system right now that would preclude him from, from, from administratively passing it. Other than the fact, if you're looking at this 100-foot point.
Yeah, there is nothing in our code that prevents like a landowner to split his land.
Yeah.
Okay.
Based on that, Mr. Chairman, I would recommend that we approve the variance.
We got a motion for approvals or a second? Got a motion and a second, any other questions before I call for the vote? If not, all those in favor say aye? Any opposed? Okay, appreciate it. I believe that's it for the zoning board of adjustments, so I will ask for a motion to adjourn that meeting.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we got a motion, a second, a third to join that motion, uh, to adjourn that meeting. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll start the Washington County Planning Board meeting. If we could, again, start with roll call, please.
Joe Manord? He's not here. Maria Banks?
Here.
Lisa Miller?
Here.
Jay Piercy? He's not here. Neil Helm?
Here.
Philip Humbard?
Here.
Lorna Shekelford?
Here. Okay, so let's move on. We have, uh, several items on the agenda. We have overly, uh, automotive conditional use permit, Schuler conditional use permit, Northwest Construction Office Conditional Use Permit, Beaver Lake Tiny House Conditional Use Permit, uh, the Granite Willow Springs Conditional Use Permit and one pre-SLD for the Granite Willow Springs. Any changes to the agenda since it was printed? Okay, any questions or adjustments to the agenda from board? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
I make a motion that we approve the agenda as is.
Got a motion, is there a second? Got a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, also, there were minutes of our last ZBA and board meeting, uh, planning board meeting that was held, uh, February 23rd, 2023. Those have been out for review. Any modifications or revisions needed for those? If not, I'll entertain a motion for that as well.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the minutes of the previous board meeting.
Got a motions or a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, a couple of things before we get started tonight. Um, first of all, I always would like to remind everybody, we do have a code of conduct. We ask everybody to be civil, uh, in your conversations and comments to the board. Uh, please treat the applicant with respect. Individuals will have three minutes to speak. Uh, representatives of a group will have 10 minutes to speak on each item. For the applicants that are here tonight, everything we're looking at is a conditional use permit. By our ordinances, it takes minimum of four votes for approval for, of a conditional use permit. We're like tonight, we only have five, uh, planning board members here. So I always want the applicants to be aware, three, three out of five doesn't get it approved. It takes four of the five votes, it takes four of the nine votes if everybody's here. So I always want to give the applicants the opportunity, if you would like to table your item until a later meeting where we have more planning board members here, that is your option. And if you want to do that, obviously, when we get to your item, just let us know you would like to table. Any questions on that? Yes, sir.
I would like to ask, uh, if, if we didn't have the votes required, could we come back?
If you, if you have your, your application heard and you don't get the votes required, it is a denial. You would then have to go through the appeal process of that decision.
And is that time consuming?
The appeal process, Sam, you wanna?
Uh, yes, if it's, if it's like denied today, uh, you have to wait 30 days until you go to the quorum. If it's denied today, the CUP denied, it has to go to the quorum court. Uh, within like 30 days, you need to file the appeal. And after that, you will be assigned like a, uh, time to be on the agenda of the quorum court of the next schedule. And yes, if you were gonna say, uh, it's time-consuming, I would say at least it would be like 30 to 40 days until like you will be heard for the next time.
And I, again, I apologize, we're low in attendance tonight. I just want everybody to be aware of that process and not catch anybody off guard, so, okay, with that...
One last question, when, uh, has, over these, these issues that are being raised tonight, has everybody had like the justice of pieces, have they had a chance to actually talk about this?
We, we are board, we are the planning board. We do not interact typically with the justice of the peace. That would be at the quorum court level.
Okay, okay.
All right, let's move forward. We'll start with Overly's Automotive CUP. We could, with the board report, please.
Thank you. A, uh, conditional use permit is sought for a automotive repair facility operated by father and son, uh, south of Highway 16, off of Tall Grass Road, a city of Fayetteville Road. This is in the city of Fayetteville Planning Area. Um, the shop has been in operation since July of 2022 and the CUP is to bring it in compliance with county regulations. Uh, the shop is about 40 feet by 50 feet on .37 acre, uh, along with a gravel parking lot. Planning Department has received mixed comments from, uh, neighbors. One neighbor states that there's no adverse issue with the operation and, uh, three neighbors opposing, uh, citing increased traffic by delivery trucks, tow trucks and vehicles needing repairs, uh, diesel truck noise and exhaust, gravel dust, gravel drive dust, decreased property value, pedestrian safety and environmental concerns. Um, if approved, planning recommends, uh, CUP specifically for a commercial automotive shop. Uh, don't allow vehi- vehicular liquids to drop to the ground. Uh, facility is not to contain salvage non-driveable vehicles and any deviation or changes would have to come back before the planning board.
Okay, and just for my recollection, a conditional use permit would run the time of the applicant and not the property, correct?
The property.
It runs...
It's opposite, runs with the property, so it has to stay with the property.
Get that confused, thank you. Okay, is the applicant here tonight?
I, we are, yes.
Okay, do you, would you like to proceed?
Um, I, I think we might, might actually hold off for...
You want to table the item?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it's, I, I think we will, and...
You can ta- you can table the item and you'll be back on the agenda for our next meeting, which is May 4th?
It will be May 4th, but like, let me ma- ma- make sure that like you understand that's this, this shop is like in operation and like it's being brought to, uh, compliance, that's why they're applying, so.
I understand. I, I still, I think we gotta give the applicant that opportunity.
Absolutely, yeah.
I mean, it's, it's, it's our, our impairment that we have low attendance, so.
Yeah, so it would be May 4th, same time, that's why I'm here.
I think, I think we'll go with that. James? My father is actually the, the man behind. What are we doing? Wait for the next one? Okay, yes, sir.
Okay, so item A, Overly Automotive CUP will be tabled at this time. All right, let's move on. Next item, Schuler CUP, Springdale Planning Area, if you would, please.
Thank you. A CUP is sought to lease existing, uh, buildings for operations, office, mechanical tools and storage to various tenants. Uh, each building will accommodate no more than five employees for more, no more than 20 employees with about 1,000 square feet of office space. Uh, it is, uh, along Hewitt Springs Road, south of Parsons, in the Springdale Planning Area. To date, we've received no commentary from neighbors and no technical concerns.
Okay, is the applicant here tonight?
Hi, Renee Bybee, I'm representing McCarty Schuler Holdings.
Okay. If you would, tell us a little bit about your project.
Um, McCarty Schuler is a family, it's a father, a son and a son-in-law. They each have their own businesses. They used to own the Mercedes dealership in Fayetteville. They're out of space on Greg Avenue. So Mr. McCarty just went to store some parts in one of the existing chicken houses. His son owns Arkey Towing and his other son-in-law owns a restoration business. They'll be housing their offices in those existing buildings that are there. There won't be any site changes at all. And the property has previously been used as a tractor salvage yard and as a, um, flea market. Um, it pre-existed conditional use zoning permits and so that's what we're here for.
Okay, appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you, we may call you back. Is there anybody from the audience that would like to speak to this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. Staff comments were, again, no, no comments from adjoining property owners, no issues from your standpoint?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Is this in the Springdale Planning Area?
It is.
Have we, did we get comments from them?
I believe cursory comments from, uh, Springdale Water, nothing out of the ordinary.
Okay.
Nothing from planning.
We have, we have like lots of like, uh, comments came back from the Springdale water and should be in the staff report.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the, uh, uh, conditional use permit for the Schuler CUP.
Got a motion for approvals or a second?
I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, ma'am. Okay, next, Northwest Construction Office C... Okay, next, Northwest Construction Office CUP. Staff report, please.
Thank you. A CUP is sought for a combination shop, office, and warehouse space for a construction business. They propose a twelve thousand square foot structure off of Wade Road due south of four twelve east. We have received no comments from neighbors. Comments received from a technical perspective is Springdale Water stating that water service is very limited out there. They'd be limited to a five-eight cent meter. Knob hill fire requires structures twelve thousand square feet and larger to require sprinkling. So I'm hoping the applicant can provide further insight on how they're going to satisfy knob hill fire. And planning just requires that any changes to the operation come before planning board.
Okay, appreciate it. Any questions of staff from board? All right, if not, is the applicant here?
Yes.
If you would, please state your name and address for the record and tell us a little about your project.
I'm Titus Summers. My address is two-three-four-seven-two Ford Road, Hindsville, Arkansas. And we are a company of five partners, and we do our own, most of our own labor, and we do concrete construction. And this is just a place to house our equipment and things like that, and so, yep.
Okay. I'll ask the first question. Obviously, you heard staff comments, and we get into this in the county on larger developments. Have you, is there a tank system? What are you, what are you proposing to do for sprinklers?
So, we, I discussed this with Gary Hall, and we decided, and he thought the best thing to do was downsize the building, so that's what we did.
Okay.
And made it just under twelve thousand square feet, so.
Okay, all right, thank you. Other questions from the board? All right, appreciate it. We may holler back at you in a minute.
Okay.
Anybody from the item, I'm sorry, anybody from the audience that would like to address this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll close it for public comment. Staff comfortable with the building being under twelve thousand square feet and meeting our ordinances?
Comfortable, yes.
Yes, sir, no issues.
Okay, thank you very much. To the board.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the Northwest Construction Office CUP.
We have a motion for approvals or a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right, next up is the Beaver Lake Tiny Home CUP. Start with staff comments, please.
A CUP is sought for the development of twenty-seven, a twenty-seven unit tiny home community on, it states four point eight-two acres, but I believe that's in error. It's about three point seven, I believe. Three point seven acres of land next to Beaver Lake. Pre-manufactured homes have an occupancy of up to two people per house and two-car private driveway off of Saddle Shop Road. A floodplain permit was issued by Planning Department on February twenty-fourth of this year. Today, we received significant comments from neighbors, and also a attorney representing their interests in opposition, the general just being safety to Beaver Lake from sewage effluent runoff, such like that.
Okay. Question, and my memory's not always right, but didn't we approve a CUP for, like, food trucks on this property?
We did.
Okay, and that never came to fruition?
That's my understanding.
It ne, it never completed, so the project was never completed.
Is that conditional use still out there?
No, it's dead. It's been like over eighteen months.
Okay, thank you.
It seemed like we had one other thing come and try to get approved here also.
For, for the same?
For the same property.
It was the Beaver Lake food trucks.
I know, but there was another one after that, I believe.
I'm not aware.
Oh, there, there was-
I think that was on Sonora, wasn't it? It's Sonora and four twelve.
There was like the neighboring property, they had like the lodge. That's neighboring, it's close by, so.
All right, any other questions of staff? Okay, is the applicant here tonight? If you would, please state your name and address for the record.
Dave Gallo, and I also have the landowner Jonathan McJunkins and our engineer Gavin Smith here to answer any technical questions.
Okay.
The, I guess the best way to, to go about this would be to give you a little background about what we've currently done in the Rogers area with two different developments up there. We have developed a couple of tiny house communities up there. One is on Olive Street, and one is on Montney, working with the city of Rogers. And we currently own and manage those two communities, my wife and I, and we're, they're land lease communities. And what we do is we provide the lawn care and some of the utilities, and then folks are homeowners. So we have almost all homeowners on both properties, and then they do a land lease. The properties are managed through governances that we have to make sure that we have really two things. Number one, good behavior, so just making sure that we have good neighbors, and then also architectural guidelines to make sure that the homes look right and that they're gonna stay right. We have our homes professionally, of course, professionally installed. And the, the homes are single-bedroom homes with a single bathroom, and from a, from a density standpoint, I think we can stand pretty tall in that area. Our current occupancy is one point one-four per house. Most of them are singles. We have seven of our fifty residents currently have two people in the homes. So there's a very low occupancy rate for the homes. One of the things that I saw up there was septic, and then also, so any type of waste. We're, obviously, we're going to adhere to any, what we need to from a county perspective, as well as the state perspective in regard to sewer, septic runoff, and make sure that we're adhering to all the guidelines in that regard. Just the, one of the things that a lot of people think about when they think manufactured homes are cheap homes, and I wanna just give you a little bit of, an understanding of our homes. They're gonna run anywhere from ninety to about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So roughly three hundred dollars a foot is what the average is gonna be for our homes. They're, they're built like homes, two-by-six floors, two-by-four walls, the hardy board construction on the exterior with a metal roof. With the property that we have here, with the lake, we want to make sure that we have front porches facing the lake so that we have the aesthetic value for that. And then with it being on the lake, we would also like to offer some type of boat storage, i-if someone would have a boat, that we would be able to keep that kind of neat and tidy. I, I actually don't allow any boat storage on my current property, so that's one thing that we want to make sure that we manage and keep control of. The, as far as the space lease, we're still up in the air on that. That's really gonna be a product of the cost of developing the land.
Okay. All right, so two questions. You say they're, they're tenant-owned homes. They pay a ground lease, they own the house but not the ground it sits on, is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct.
Is there individual septic for each unit, or is it a community septic system that this goes through?
I'm gonna turn around, I'm gonna ask Jonathan if he could kind of address.
Yeah, if you would, please. Yes, sir. And again, if you would, state your name and address for the record.
Jonathan McJunkins, forty-three eighty-nine Looper Road in Lowell, Arkansas. I've had this property for a couple of years now, and there was a CUP that came up, food courts, didn't go through with that. As far as the septic, is what we're, we're talking about, the septic field?
Yes, sir. My question was, was there individual septic for each home, or is it a community septic? How does this compare to-
We're not gonna be doing a conventional system. It'll be the treatment system, which can only hold nine homes, so there'll be three different-
Step system.
Phases, pretty much, so three different systems. It takes the, the, it comes in through a drip field instead of a conventional system, and it really takes the, the square footage of the septic field way down. So where we have a leach field on the diagram today, we don't even need half of that for the primary and the secondary.
Okay. And you've already been in contact with the state health department for, for permitting of this system?
Yes, sir. Sam Dunn gave us a, a small design up there. He was actually out there finishing it up today-
Okay.
With the state, and he has talked to Kyle, I don't know Kyle's last name, that is, we'll sign off on it.
Then my last question, obviously, I think we're all familiar with the, the RV across the street. What's the density you're proposing? I don't know if you have the answer to that. What's the density you're proposing compared to what an RV park or something like that would be?
I can tell you the density on our current communities, we have twenty-six tiny homes and a stick-built house on two acres on Olive Street. So that's a density of around thirteen and a half per acre. And then on, on the one that we have, on Montney Road, is five point three acres with fifty homes. And this would be four point, I believe it's four point four, four point two acres, and we're looking at a density of twenty-seven. So it's actually significantly less than the density that we would have on our current. It's about point seven-five.
Okay, all right.
Did you just say that the property in Rogers was stit-built homes?
No, ma'am. They're, they're the same tiny house-built homes that-
Who's the manufacturer of these homes?
Platinum cottages.
Out of where?
Out of Malakoff, Texas.
That's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, other questions of the applicant?
You said earlier, well, that, that they own the, the house but not the land that it sits on?
Yes, ma'am.
So if somebody decides to move, they take their home with them?
We've actually have not had that happen. Most of the times, I have had people sell their house on site and then buy another house to put somewhere else, but one of the things that we have done and that we are going to continue to do is to do block skirting around them, because I like the look of that personally better than the metal. It gives it a more permanent feel, as well as we do poured concrete steps. So while, yes, they can technically move it, it's very difficult to relocate the house once it's set.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant? Okay, appreciate it. We may have you back in a bit.
Yep.
All right, let's open this up for public comment. If there's anybody here that would like to speak to this, please let me know. If you would, sir, please state your name, address for the record.
Thank you. My name is Robert Rhodes.
Hold on, they turned the light off. Okay, sorry.
Thank you. My name is Robert Rhodes. I'm a lawyer with the law firm of Hall Estill here in Fayetteville, and I'm representing four of the neighbors, and so I've kind of timed my remarks, and they're about seven-
You got ten minutes.
Oh, then I'll finish plenty of time. Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Again, I represent four of the nearby neighbors, and that being Rick Wharton, Wayne Arnold, Gregory Hawthorne, and Rick Smith. As you probably know, according to the Beaver Lake Water District, our lake serves over four thousand customers water, and that in the next twenty-five years, I think they think that's gonna be doubled, so the lake's important. In regard to the Beaver Lake Water District, in a March ninth email to the Washington County Planning Department, in which they are asked to comment on this CUP, the district said, and I quote, "This development has too high density for lakeside use." And I think that comment was based on what we originally saw up there, which I said, which, which I think he said was in error, and actually, the property is smaller, and so the density is even greater than what was thought. So, they go on further, the Beaver Lake Water District. "The density of the community of the lakeshore will result in unwanted septic waste pressure to the water quality of the lake. Should a septic system fail this close to the lake, there is no buffer to prevent raw sewage from draining directly into our drinking water source." Now, the Water District went on to discuss the fact that there are no county ordinances or regulations requiring inspection of these type of septic systems so close to the lake. And they consider that a real issue in light of the, quote, "Too many nightmare scenarios here in northwest Arkansas of long-failed septic systems." So the organization that is charged with responsibility of taking care of our drinking water, the drinking water that you want your kids and your grandkids to be able to enjoy, well, that organization, as you can tell, believes there is a good reason why this development should not happen here. I'd also tell you that the developers engineer in a February twenty-fourth letter to the Planning Department said, quote, "Regarding the drainage, all runoff is directed into the lake." According to the Beaver Lake Water District, they strongly believe that Beaver Lake, quote, "Beaver Lake is not a storm water retention basin." So again, for those reasons, the Water District opposes this CUP. Further, in regard to the septic system, there are le, there are leach fields, as I think you saw up there, which according to the developer's plat, it's provided, that it provided to the Planning Department, calls for that field to be in the middle of this development. One of the conditions suggested by the Planning Department is that parking be prohibited in the leach field. Well, that's obvious, you don't want to rupture the leach field. My question would be, prohibited or not prohibited, what happens if somebody does park in the leach field or uses it for a turnaround while they're parking their boat or a UPS van? Again, you're asking for potential trouble of a breached septic system so close to our lake. Further, there has been no pre-approve, of pre-approval of this system by the Arkansas Department of Environmental Quality, nor the Department of Health. I realize those approvals would be a requirement of this CUP, if this CUP passes, but it would seem to me that it would be more prudent for this body to deny that, deny it right now, and not have to depend on the ADEQ or the Department of Health denying or not denying permits. Another issue brought up in the staff report is that water capacity. Although there is water on the property, the water capacity is very limited, low pressure, that doesn't necessarily bode well. Further, according to the developer's drawings and plats, it appears that, that the ingress and egress that they plan, their driveway, will be over a massive ravine, which is over the, quote, "Flowage easement owned by the Corps of Engineers," end quote. That according to Beaver Lake Shoreline Management Map. So there's been, there's been nothing that I've seen where anyone has talked to or gotten permission from the Corps of Engineers about this issue. But in our discussions with a septic system design specialist, he indicates that this would be an issue with the Corps, and further, there may be an issue with the, quote, "High water elevation mark." And this is something that the Corps requires, that at least there's a hundred-foot setback from that mark for whatever that mark may be for this portion of the lake. I can tell you that when I went there to visit the site, I looked down that ravine, and I was surprised to see, I thought it would be just a ravine, it's a finger of the lake. There's water, there is water in it right now. And, and I don't think it's because the lake's eight feet high. I think there's always some water in that, so it's a finger of the lake. So, and you can tell that, I think you can tell that from the staff pictures as well. So again, it would seem that granting this CUP would be quite premature in lack of, in, in light of the lack of discussions with the Corps of Engineers. Finally, in reviewing the staff's report, it should be extremely clear that this development is incredibly incompatible with its surroundings. According to the staff report, if you look in any direction, east, west, north, whatever, all four of those directions, they're all zoned agricultural, single-family residential, one unit per acre. So if you look at the staff report, and again, that's based on an inaccurate number now, as I understand, but it, but when I looked at it, I figured this to be six point two units per acre. Well, I think now it's even greater. It's probably seven or something, based on the smaller piece of property and the fact that it's twenty-seven units. My point is, is that, that's potentially sixty-plus people, plus potentially sixty cars, all these cars pulling out on saddle line, saddle lane, and then trying to cross four twelve. And it, it appears to be that might be a little bit of a traffic issue. But again, the, the, the fact that, that you're looking at everything else around it, one acre, you know, one unit per acre, and then all of a sudden you explode something to that. So for all those reasons, I would ask you not to approve this. And I would stand ready to answer any questions you might have for, for my clients, and I also- And I also, if I may, would give to that gentleman right there some letters that my clients wrote that you may not have gotten yet. It's two, it's two different ones. I've got copies. Did y'all get them? Okay, okay.
Yes, sir, we got those before the meeting started this afternoon.
Hey, thank you all for your time. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else from the audience that would like to address this? Okay, I'll close it to public comment. Ask the applicant to come back up, please. So I'm, I'm familiar with the property as well. I live off of Blue Springs Road, so I go through here. I had the same question on access across that ravine. Can you give us a little input on how that's going to work?
Jonathan, I think you probably-
We'll get you another chair if you want.
I'm good.
Okay.
So crossing that?
Yes.
I call it a holler.
Yeah.
I think our only thing that stands in our way is the utilities. And there's a Springdale Water, an AC water main there that we hydrovacked and an AT&amp;T facility. Both of those not under 36 inches, so they need to be taken down. There's a berm built there, so the utilities weren't really buried, they were, a berm was built over them right there. And then I've spoke with the duty rangers and the Beaver Lake folks several times, and that property is mine. They're, they're, they do not have a flowage easement through there. And so it's just a matter of, you know, concrete culverts, however large we need to get. They do not have any issues with backflow of water coming up in, into that property or the Arkansas DOT having runoff coming down through there. There's, there hasn't been water in that holler for two years. So no one on either side, Arkansas DOT or the duty rangers, have any issue with crossing that. So it's just a matter of dirt and diesel.
Okay, so you're going to go all the way to the bottom bridge across and come back?
No, sir, we're going to build it up.
You're going to build it up?
That, if you look across that, that holler, that is a large hill that then drops down into a flat area and we're going to carve that off.
Okay.
And then also own property to bring red dirt in if we needed to make that better. But it will be aesthetic, it will be commercial. It looks daunting, but.
Okay.
It's moving dirt.
It's moving dirt, yeah.
Okay, other questions for the applicant?
Blake, is approval of the Corps of Engineers anywhere in the approval?
It's not.
So if that's on their property or in their tankage line or whatever they call it, they'll have to get some sort of approval, wouldn't they?
I believe so.
Yep, yeah.
And I did ask earlier, you guys have made application to the state on the septic?
Absolutely, and we're inches away from approval.
Okay, alright, thank you.
And the state representative that's going to sign off on it is well aware of the project three weeks ago and every detail of it.
Okay.
And that, we did very careful because we, we took into consideration the lake as well. I've had the property for a couple of years and that property, I don't want any leach getting in. I don't want any leach getting anywhere near that lake. And I think that the system that we have, which is not a conventional system, the drip system prevents that. And that's why Sam Dunn pointed us in that direction from the Department of Health, so.
Well, historically, the county's depended on state for approval. The, the comment that the county doesn't have inspection requirements is because the state does. And then we don't, we typically defer to ADEQ and the State Health Department for that. So the approval would be subject to those permits and that's about, you know, we, we, we depend on the state for that approval.
I feel that we're all but have that locked up.
The other question I had, the proposed boat parking, that's just parking, that's not covered? There's not going to be a building built there?
I would plan on doing it, yeah.
No.
Okay.
We might do like a cover for them, but not?
Not a building.
Okay. Alright, any other questions for the applicant? Okay, appreciate it. I'll bring it back to the board.
This, just to staff, this is subject to two levels of civil engineering reviews. And it don't, their, their, their civil engineer presents it and then doesn't, ours oversee it as well?
Correct, that would come, if approved for the CUP, they would come back for a preliminary LSD, at which time the piccadilloes of Corps of Engineers and, and more details about the step design and its approval from the ADH would come into play. We're simply talking the merits of a higher-density use of this property with the single-family homes, the, the tiny homes, rather than the details of unconventional septic design.
Yeah, most likely they're going to have to do like a stormwater study and like septic study, make sure like everything is like fits to our ordinances because we, the county has ordinances like for like septic. And they have to do like maybe like water flowage easement and they have to get like ADEQ and maybe the Beaver Lake Water District involved just to make sure everything is like in check.
And that's, I'm sorry to interrupt.
The reason I asked those questions, I've got a dog in this hunt too. I drink the water even though I live about 40 or 50 miles downstream. And it, it's every day for me, so I, I don't. And that, the one point that was made about who assures compliance is a very important point. And I, our, our county judge is back here, that's one of the things I would encourage him to, to be on, on his list is, is, is compliance as far as these step systems are concerned. Because they've, you know, they've been going on now in our area for 20 some odd years and I've not heard any crashes. But I do drink the water. Thank you.
And just for clarification, that's one of the reasons I asked the question, if they'd made application to the state at this point, I would strongly suggest, not saying it's going to get approved, but if it does get approved, to have those applications in hand when you come back for the large-scale development approval. And we are at this point, I don't know if the county ever plans to take that on, but we are at this point dependent upon the state.
When, when it comes to the CUP, normally they're required, like when it comes to anything septic, is the perk test and they already provided that, so. But like the issue is with the septic design and who's going to be the ownership. The ownership of the septic design is going to be owned by the property owner or is going to be owned by the homeowners, so.
I'm looking at the Platinum Cottages website and they are calling these, quote, "Park model RV industry." So these are considered RVs, apparently, from what I'm reading in their website. Is that correct?
They're a park model home?
It says, quote, "Park model RV," per their website, their page, Malakoff, Texas, Platinum Cottages.
Yes, it's a park model RV, but it's, if you've been to our sites, you'll see that they're not an RV camp.
If you would please, sir, come back.
Sure.
Yeah, this is actually a great question. I've been in contact with our state representative in regard to this, as well as the manufactured home. His name's JD, I can't think of his last name off the top of my head. But we're actually in the process with the state to get them reclassified as manufactured homes from a taxation purpose. And because, because they are built in a facility, they're transported like a manufactured home, they're set up like a manufactured home, they have to have a permit with a semi to drive them down the road. You can't hook them up to a regular vehicle and pull them down the road. So while yes, they're called a park model RV, in no way do they simulate to what a recreational, what you would think a recreational or a travel trailer would be associated with. So we actually had a lot of back and forth with the state in regard to that because of the taxation on how they're treated. And the state is lining up with that these should be treated as a manufactured home from a taxation purpose standpoint. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, and the CUP, they are presented as like manufactured homes, not as RVs. And they're marketed as well as like manufactured.
Well, and I would note, there is a substantially large RV park a half a mile from here in the same proximity as well, so.
King's Ransom, yes, of course.
Just on the other side of 412. Okay, any other questions or comments? Any action?
Mr. Chairman, I've moved that we approve the preliminary CUP as stated by staff.
We got a motion for approval. Is there a second? I'll second it. We got a motion and a second. Any other questions before I call for the vote? If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, so we have a three to two vote. We don't have, it takes four to pass a conditional use permit, so the conditional use permit is denied. Okay, appreciate it. Thank you. Be, Sam can visit with you about appeal process, filing dates, that sort of thing as well. Thank you. Okay, let's move forward. Next item on the agenda is the Grand at Willow Springs CUP. Staff report, please.
Thank you, A.C.U.P. has sought for a wedding venue near Prairie Grove. The venue anticipates one wedding event per week with a maximum vehicle count of approximately 120 vehicles. The site consists of a 5,500-square-foot wedding chapel, a 11,500-square-foot reception hall, paved parking lot, with about 120 spaces, retention pond, and landscaping. Two neighbors have reached out in opposition, general issues being increased traffic, safety, alcohol consumption, and precedent for further commercial construction. Planning conditions would include limit hours of operation Monday through Thursday from 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. and Friday through Sunday from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. No outdoor amplified music. Requirement that food be catered because of lack of onsite kitchen facility. And any further changes or deviations come before planning board.
Thank you. One question, can you tell me, I'm sure I missed it, what's the size of the tract of property this is being proposed on?
I believe, I believe it's 30 something, right there, 37?
Yes.
37 acres? Okay, thank you. 31.
31?
Okay, sorry, I missed it.
What it says, I don't know.
Any questions for staff at this time? Okay, I assume you're the applicant. If you would, please state your name and address for the record.
Sure. My name is Dirk Tibbetto. I'm with Half, representing the owners. The owners are Eric and Lindsay Walker. This project is very dear to their heart. They have a daughter that is wanting to get married. They started looking for wedding venues and didn't find anything that they found that was suitable to, to meet their needs. But this particular piece of property looks down through a valley to, to where they live. So that, this is a gorgeous valley view piece of property. And they looked at this and said, well, this would be a great place to, to hold the wedding. And so they looked at the, the reality of building a chapel and a venue site here and then using this beautiful setting and setting this little white chapel nestled up in the hillside and then allowing their daughter to actually run the business after her wedding. So they're building something that they want to build for their family and then share with other families as a continued business. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant at this time? Okay, I'll open it up to public. If there's anybody here that would like to make comments regarding this, if you would, please state your name and address.
Hi, my name's Margot Hale. I live at 15564 Prairie View Road. I consider myself an informed, engaged citizen. I really never thought I'd be sitting here in front of the planning board to speak on, to ask you to deny a development. My dad, David Daniel, served on the quorum court from 2002 to 2008. And he is the one who actually proposed countywide zoning and worked with others to get these regulations put in place. And I was talking with my dad last night about this and he reiterated that his goal for, for countywide zoning was to protect agricultural land and rural residential citizens. He, he saw that without a check on development and a rezoning process and this conditional use process, all land is at risk to be developed with no consideration to the impacts that it has on, on our rural areas. So, you know, even with these regulations in place, I'm seeing now every day that it apparently doesn't seem to matter too much. The developer has started construction on this pro, process, on this project long before this meeting. You know, before there's any approvals, we are daily, experiencing daily disruptions due to construction that's happening already on our road. On Prairie View Road, there are 13 residences and they range from a camper trailer to a home of about 3,400 square feet. And the, the majority of homes on our road are less than 2,000 square feet. And so I don't see how a chapel and reception hall of 17,000 square feet are compatible with the area. A parking lot for 120 cars does not fit and is not compatible with the farmland and the, the single-family residential that we have on our road. Most of the homes on Prairie View Road don't even have paved driveways, you know, we're, we're a dirt road. We have gravel driveways, a large parking lot. It, it just, it doesn't fit. It is a beautiful area. It is absolutely beautiful. And the name of our road is Prairie View Road. And those of us who live there, we enjoy the beauty and the peacefulness of our road. I know that my husband and I, we submitted a letter, I, I think you probably all have seen it. And we are very concerned about increased traffic and noise to our road. And we have enjoyed living in a peaceful area with very little traffic and noise. We know our neighbors, we know the vehicles that they drive. And we recognize when a, a different or strange vehicle comes down our road. Our home sits up on this hill with windows that overlook Prairie View Road and we see every car that drives down Prairie View Road. And we, we notice when there's an unfamiliar car. I have two daughters, they are 11 and 12, and we use Prairie View Road all of the time. Our girls ride with their bikes, they run, they're in sports, I walk on the road. And I've never had concerns about letting our girls go out and ride their bikes or go running on our road. But that won't be the case anymore if this development goes through. With hundreds of people, hundreds of strangers on our road on a weekly basis and all of the cars driving in and out. And it's just, the, the driveway into this development is just a few hundred feet from our driveway. And so I already, in the past week or so, construction traffic has increased dramatically on our road. And it already, you know, it already causes disruptions and, you know, leads to us feeling less safe when there's dump trucks and semi trucks going up and down our road all the time. So raising our daughters on a small farm in the country, that's always been our dream. And our family, we love being outside. We enjoy the peace that our farm and that we've worked really hard to achieve. We love our animals, we love our garden. We like to sit on our front porch and watch the cows and watch the sunset or sit in our backyard by the fire pit at night and look at the stars. And we're at risk of losing that because on a weekend when we're home enjoying our home, there's going to be a wedding going on just a few hundred feet, you know, a property across from us. And so we, we don't want to see and hear the weekly, the activity of weekly events. We just, that's not the reason we bought land, bought a farm in the country. We didn't want to be near development. And so, you know, we just see this as a starting point for more commercial developments going in. I mean, we all see development that happens all over the place. And we're, I'm just asking that you don't approve this. Let's protect, you know, a peaceful country road and not bring a large commercial development to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. El. Appreciate it. Anybody else like to speak to this item? If you would, please, surname, state your name and address for the record.
Yes, I'm Larry Walker, 15053 Walker Road. And the valley that she's talking about to look over and the cows are, most of them are mine and my wife's and God's because we're just caretakers. We moved to this farm in 1980 from Little Elm Community. We moved over there in a travel trailer and a 16-foot storage building. And my wife went to milking cows at 4 o'clock in the morning. We have been able to put together a real nice farm there and we try to take care of it correctly. We have been able to put together a real nice farm there, and we try to take care of it correctly. I drove down that road here just recently going to the venue. School bus was coming up the road. Well, I have to pull off the road to allow the school, and I've got a video of that. The road needs to be improved. There's no doubt. The truck, you know, the school bus runs through there, and it is, there's no road. But, you know, we talk about being on the planning board. I was on that board. I sit in that same chair that y'all do. And it's tough. I can remember, we had a wedding venue that came before us down at the sunset area. And we required them to put in a pond for fire protection. We required them to put in a 75,000-pound road for fire trucks. This project, and if you ever went and looked at it, it is exquisite, you know, it's just totally built correctly. The engineers, the architects, I've been out there. I've been in the building business since 1974. Matter of fact, this building we're sitting in, we did the brickwork on it. But the footings and the steel in that building blows my mind. So, you know, it's a very quality-built building. It's not going to depreciate anybody's property value. If anything, it will probably increase. And I said, I don't like that because my taxes are going to go up, you know, but still, it is, it is a well-built, very nice venue. And, you know, yeah, I've been here. Like I said, we moved to that farm in 1980, and we've seen lots and lots of, you know, different things change. I can go back and remember, Mr. Hail, we can remember when that road was in front of my house was gravel road. You know, it was a gravel road. So, we're in northwest Arkansas. We're going to see development. And everything is, as long as it's done, you know, properly. And when I was on the board, I wanted to protect my neighbors. You know, that's the whole thing. That's why the planning board started. But at the same time, if you're not devaluing people's property and you're not causing them grief over anything, then our rules and regulations don't allow us to deny this, this project. I mean, you know, it's just, I know where you're at, and it's a tough, it's a tough place to be because I've been there. But it's, you know, this project, I, you know, like I said, most of the land that's, that it's looking over is our land. So, I just, I would request that you just go ahead and move forward with this and approve the, approve the project. Now, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. I appreciate you. All right, anybody else want to make comments? If you would, please state your name and address for the record.
My name, my name's Eric Walker. I live on 14844 Walker Road. This venue is my project, and it's a heartfelt project. My daughter, my daughter means everything to me in the world, and I'd do anything for my kids. My daughter is a top-10 graduate at Oklahoma State University right now. She got recognized, actually, we go over in a couple of weeks, and she got recognized as a top-10 graduate, and I'm very proud of her. Her ask to me was, I want to move home, Dad. I want to live in northwest Arkansas. I want to live on the farm I grew up on and that I helped you pull calves and take care of cattle. And this is a way that I can help my daughter move home, that she can create her own business and be her own entrepreneur. And, and I understand what the Hales are talking about. I love that place. I live on that farm. My daughter plans on living on that farm. My son lives on that farm. We all live there. We're all going to be entrenched with this venue. But what I'd tell you is there's something else. That place is beautiful, and I'm so proud of my dad, who started with nothing and literally had a wheelbarrow and one labor and created a business that I'm fortunate enough to continue to run. And, and without that, he wouldn't have been able to create that farm. But it's beautiful, and what's wrong with sharing it with other people that want to celebrate their kids' weddings and the start of a beautiful marriage? And why not share that with them that want to look over a beautiful farm because they are all disappearing? But this, this venue gives us an opportunity as a, as a family to continue to hang on to that farm. Because if you've done much farming, you know cows aren't paying the bills no more. And we would love to keep that bottom land just like it's been since I was six years old when we moved there. And, and so, I hope you understand, we, we want to beautify the area, and honestly, we want to share the area with others that could come and see how beautiful it is and appreciate what we as farmers are doing. And so, I ask that you understand that we don't want anything bad for the neighbors. We want to widen the road so it's safer for everyone. We've told the county road department we'll participate in any way we need to on that. I've talked to every neighbor around there and, and tried to address every one of their concerns. We, we don't want loud music because I live right across the road. We don't want late nights because I'm a construction worker. I go to bed at 9:00 a.m., or 9:00 p.m. So, we want to shut off, the weddings shut off so that we can clean up the venue and then go back to bed. So, I thank you for your time and, and, and listening to me.
Appreciate it, sir. Thank you. Anybody else want to make comments? If you would, please state your name and address for the record when you sit down. Thank you.
My name is Joshua Hale. I live at 15564 Prairie View Road. We have a 20-acre farm. We raise cows and goats, chickens, pigs, two daughters, vegetables, fruit. I hope you all had a chance to come and see this property and drive by. I don't know if that's something that you do or not, but if you did, you saw this on a very rural road. It's a dirt road. It's a quiet, nice, peaceful place. I do appreciate the Walkers and what they've done to help make it that way. I, the standards for approval that I've been able to come across from the county talk about, several of them are subjective, but one of the main ones is the proposed use is compatible with the surrounding area. Another one talks about comfort and general welfare. Another, not be injurious to the use and joint of property in the surrounding area. So, they all deal with, is it going to affect the neighbors? And I personally think it will affect the neighbors. Our road's quiet, rural road with a lot of farmland. It's not close to, that close to a city. It's not any kind of transitional area between a city and the rural farmland. There's no commercial developments nearby or subdivisions going in on our road. This is not an old barn that's being converted. It's brand-new, huge development. It will be one of the biggest wedding-specific venues in northwest Arkansas according to what I've been able to research. Up to 500 people is what they've advertised. That's a huge increase of traffic on our road. I've talked to lots of neighbors, some multiple times. Most I've talked to are not for this development. Several neighbors don't want to get involved. They're older. We have lots of older people on our road. I talk to them all the time. They don't want to get involved and don't feel like they can do anything. Some are for paving the road, which I totally understand. I'm not personally for this as it could lead to an increase in usage as a cut-through road and also speeds, which make it actually more dangerous. A gravel road helps control speeds. I don't think this road will be even be considered for as small of a number of houses there are to be widened or paved if it wasn't for this development going in and the offer from the owner to help, help pay for that. And I honestly don't think it makes sense, when you think about it, that any neighbors is actually before this. People don't usually move to the county into a rural area to a farm and say, well, I hope that a big commercial development goes in, you know, a house down or across the road or a few houses down. I just don't think that that's the case for anybody really unless you're building that commercial development. It doesn't improve our neighborhood, life of our neighbors any way that I can see besides having a paved road. This is not a business that caters to neighbors or sells goods or provides service that helps the neighbors. This is for people who don't live in our area, hundreds of them who come every week to our road and use our road, that don't have the concerns that we do for our neighbors in our road. Alcohol will be served, as we know, at weddings. They'll drink a lot, and they get back on our roads without any increase in patrols by the sheriff's department. And they talked about increasing property values. Yes, I agree. It'll increase property values, increase taxes, which is unfortunate. But value's not just found in money. To a lot of people who live in my area and all rural areas, value is found in a rural lifestyle. In peace and quiet and in farming, bringing development reduces these values. So, while it may increase value as far as money, it does not increase value in other things that we find important of our rural lifestyle and being in a farm.
Sir, I'm going to, we're well past the three minutes. I need you to, I'm sorry, if you could just wrap it up.
I'll wrap it up. Yes, yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
I just, one question I have and I don't understand is what recourse the neighbors have? If the restrictions that are put on this by the planning board, what recourse do we have to, I guess, fight those or like with the music outdoors, if there's a, what can we do if it is approved? Do we call the sheriff? What happens with that? Because I'm not sure what restrictions. There's been a lot of other restrictions put on other facilities like this, like no fireworks, only the permitted uses are allowed, restriction of the number of events per week. And so, I'm just not sure if it is approved, which I hope it's not at all, but what recourse we have. I know that in advertisements, they've already advertised, and I can show them to you, that after they submitted this, that it would be open until, that it's open until 1:00 a.m., that there's an outdoor party area. All those are on, they've advertised for, and I'm just, I just don't know what recourse the neighbors will have if this gets approved, and it totally messes with our quiet, peace and quiet.
We'll address that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. Anybody else want to comment?
Hi, my name is Bea Ann Walker, and I live at 15053 Walker Road, Prairie Grove, Arkansas. And we have been there since 1980. We are a total farm family. All three of our sons were raised there. We have added to the original farm all the way around. That's why we have most of that area in that complete area other than a few, a few places. And that has been a blessing, but it's been a lot of hard work. You've never met a man that works harder than my husband or my son unless it's our other two sons. We are hard workers. We do what we have to do to keep country and keep it farm, and we love it that way. This is not going to change any of that. It's simply a beautiful building on the hill across, way down the road from the one family on the entire road that has a complaint. And you've heard them tonight. They have sent me letters. They have sent our son. They've sent our granddaughter. And in those letters, they've told what nice people we are and how we've worked the place and taken care of it. And they love that every time we buy something, we improve the land. We've never done anything that's negative. It's always been positive. And I've even invited their kids over to swim in our pool, and his wife, Margot, has come. We like them. We don't dislike the Hales. And we're good neighbors to everybody. They said that in the letters they've written us. They just consider that they can control everything on the road. We've talked to every neighbor, and every neighbor has, now, we aren't pushing them, but every neighbor has said they're excited about the road. They're excited about the development. I don't know where they get the information that no other neighbors want it. No other neighbors object to us doing them. We are not involved in it. This is our son and daughter-in-law. It is their property, and it is their venue that they're building. And no one has objected to the building of the venue. It's, it's still the United States of America, and surely, to goodness, we have a right with, he has 31 acres there. There's another 40 over on the other side of it that he still plans to keep his cattle on. But it's just a beautiful place for a wedding venue, and that's what they want to do for their daughter and then to continue to do for other people. I go by the bank all the time, and there's a little girl there who has been engaged and cannot find a venue. Surely, you know of so many people who look for a wedding venue and they can't find it. She looked for months, finally found one, and still is going to have to wait to get married. Most people are having to wait almost a year to find a wedding venue, and they're booking them out a year, and that's why they're hard to find. This won't do anything but help that. And as far as the amount of people coming, the chapel does not hold that many. The, what do you call the hall? That holds more people. But even if it could hold 500 in the reception area, there won't be 500 cars there. Nobody goes to a wedding by themselves very often. It'd be half that many cars. So, I think a lot of things have been blown out of proportion because of the one family that does not want it on their road. Although, they have a dirt road on the backside of their property that their girls could walk on, that they could ride their bikes on. And another point being, really and truly, they said that this is all country out here. We have a paved road three-quarters of a mile on one side of this road, Pearson Ranch Road, and then we have a paved road, Vining Grove Road, on the other side. It's three-quarters of a mile from the venue one way and three-quarters the other way. It's the only dirt road around. So, I don't see that not, that it, maintaining a dirt road forever so they'll be happy would make a difference when they have a back, a road behind them that is accessible. It's not highly traveled. It's just a simple country road. So, I would appreciate that you would go ahead and let them finish and do what they want to do for their daughter and for her future. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. I appreciate it. All right. Again, if you'd state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, sir. My name is Jared Phillips. I live at 16704 Matier Road, just across the creek from where all this is happening. So, I'm not a direct neighbor, but I've got to drive, drive through all this to get into, into Fayetteville where I work. So, I'm a, like the Hales, I have a small farm out in the area. I'm also a professor and researcher here at the university. And one of the things I, one of the many things I work on is rural development and Ozarks. And so, what I wanted to do is, was just kind of voice my opposition to the development, but not because of anything about the Walkers. The Walkers are a lovely family. They've done incredible things for western Washington County, for the county, you know, as a whole. But I'm, I'm trying to think bigger picture. Like I asked my students too in a classroom for, think about our place in 50, 60, 100 years. And I think back a lot to the lessons that I get from, you know, from my father and from my grandfather, you know, and if I'd known him, I'm sure my great-grandfather would have done this as well. But, but I come from a long line of Ozark, poor Ozark farmers and construction workers. And one of the things that my granddad always told me to do is, if you're going to do a thing, do it right. And I know that if this thing gets built, it's going to be done right because the Walkers don't build things badly. The second thing was to make sure that, you've got to always think about everybody that's coming behind you. Think about the impact that you're going to leave. Is it a positive impact or is it a negative impact beyond just what you think about it, right? And then the third thing that my granddad always wanted me to think about was to make sure that you don't rush into a decision because a lot of times you can't undo what you've done. And that's really where I get, I get kind of worried about this development and any development like this. So, if a thought that numbers would help here, I would probably spend my time telling you how the American Farmland Trust conservatively estimates that 2,000 acres of farmland a day are lost to development and sprawl. That's about 83 acres an hour. Last time I ran the numbers on it, Washington County has beat that handily every year for the, every day of every year for the last decade or so. And that's a big problem, I think. When we start to run the numbers on what that costs the county as far as maintenance on roads, emergency services in the county, what that means is as we're losing farmland, for every dollar that a developed area now brings in, it costs the county $1.16 to maintain all of the services out into that area. So, what we know from national studies and from looking at states close to us, Missouri and Tennessee, we know that development like this actually costs the county money. We lose money on this. So, this is just from a pure dollars and cents as a taxpayer, we get worried about it. So, while no doubt this development is going to bring profit to the Walkers and hopefully to the, to their granddaughter, I don't want the business to fail if it goes through, somebody's going to have to pay for it, and it's going to be my family. It's going to be, you know, my neighbors that are going to have to pay for it. We're going to have to pay the increased taxes on our property. We're going to have to pay increased mileage for roads, increased mileage to help support an already struggling emergency service department in the county. And that's hard for me to understand why we have to kind of, why, why everybody else has to help pay for the development of somebody else's business, I think. And so, it makes it difficult to kind of, to kind of think through that. And so, and to be sure, to be clear, one wedding venue, no matter, you know, how And, and so, and to be sure, to be clear, one wedding venue, no matter, you know, how nice or, or whatever it may be, isn't the end of the world. It's not really even cause for concern. Well, well-conceived development can be good for a place, right? I think we all could admit, we, we like having, you know, good, safe roads, we liked it, some of the development that has come in has brought a, you know, more fried chicken restaurants and things like that, especially with AQ closing down. It's nice to know we can still find some chicken somewhere. But I think the, the thing, the worry about here is that development like this is often done hastily, and this development has been done hastily. They've begun to work on it before the process has even been, been approved. And, and that, that lets me, that lets me kind of, lets my mind wonder and, and, and think about the, the policy that, that the county itself has. And according to your, your guidelines or how you're supposed to approve things or not approve things, based on what, you know, the, the Hales have said, based even on what the, the Walkers have said, this development doesn't make any sense. You can look, you can look up at Article 10, Section 11, two dash 200, subsections C through G are all negated. There's no positive thing that we can see here out of this that, that runs us into the balance.
Sarah, I'm sorry, but we're, we're well past three minutes.
Well, all right, I'll wrap it up.
Thank you.
So, yeah, I mean, I'm not naive, I understand that y'all are probably gonna, probably gonna approve this, but I would just, you know, I would ask that you just think about this, that growth for the sake of growth, which is what this kind of thing is, is not helpful for our community, it's not helpful for farms and small families and young families. It's just cancer, and it's gonna be harmful in the long run for, for our places. Thank y'all very much for your time.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it, thank you. Okay, anybody else want to make comment on this before?
I just have a question.
If you have to come up to the mic, address and name for the record, please.
My name's Susan McDonald at 1834 North Wheeler Avenue, Fayetteville. And I'm just curious, is there a septic system for this place?
I have to address that staff. I don't think there's.
I'm gonna defer questions about the septic to the project engineer from half.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look at the large-scale development and conditional uses first, so that's what actually be addressed in that section.
Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you, sorry, I didn't have my mic on. All right, anybody else from the public? Okay, I'm gonna close it to public comment and bring it back to the board. Any questions of the applicant? Okay, all right. Staff or?
Looking at the blow-up that you've got here, which way is north on that, Blake? Is that to the left?
So the parking lot? The parking lot would be north, the other way?
No, parking lot's south, the other ways.
Okay, so.
And how, how close is this to the boundary, the north boundary of that, of that track? Is that something we're gonna, I know we're gonna get into it, but it's just, so it's basically built along the north?
Are we talking about the building with the parking lot?
The buildings.
The building, it's, is it about like 60 feet or something there? Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's kind of what I thought, I just was having a hard time flipping it in my mind.
Okay, any other questions? Comments? Action?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the conditional use permit as submitted by staff.
We got a motion for approval of Grand at Willow Springs CUP, is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
We got a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, all right, let's move on. The next item is actually the pre-large-scale development for the property we just talked about, the Grand at Willow Springs. Staff comments, please.
Nothing, except they've provided a significant large-scale development plan already, going into details of drainage, grading, drainage, landscaping, and other such technical details.
Any staff concerns?
No, they seem to be working with utility providers and adjacent property owners and extending easements for water service and the like.
And they're also working with the designated representative for the Health Department to be able to complete and finish the septic design, and one of the conditions for the CUP, that's of the previous like project, that it does not, like the number of visitors does not exceed the amount of the septic like approved, so that's something they have to work with. And they also like, the app, the owner and the applicant like agreed to work with the road department to improve on the road, so.
Yeah, I had a question about that, because we don't see that very often, where an applicant's willing to cost share of road improvement.
Yeah, they're willing to share like the, to, to, from, I guess, like, what is it, the Viney Road to?
What's the process for that with the, with the county road department, and has that started?
Uh, no, I mean, I, I'm not, I'm not aware that they started anything, but that's something the road department will have to address, but like they agree.
And we'll see this again as a large-scale development, is that correct?
Definitely.
Okay, all right, I'm gonna come back to the applicant, because I've got a couple of questions. Is there any other questions for staff before we come back to the applicant? Okay, so I'll ask you. Do you, have you still had those initial conversations with the county road department as far as cost sharing to approve the road?
Yes, sir. I met with Mr. Crowder with the road department and Mr. Peoples the end of November, met with them again in December, asked them what process that was, I told them that I was more than happy to participate in the paving and widening of the road. Mr. Crowder gave me preliminary cost, I said, where do I sign?
Okay.
I'll, I'll do my portion, and basically he said Judge Deakins would have to approve the, the.
Obviously, I mean, if we're talking about approving a pre-LSD, the large-scale development comeback, it would be great, whatever update you could give us at that time, assuming this is approved. Second question is on the septic, can you tell us a little bit about the size of the septic, if you made application with state, where you are on the septic issue?
Yep, and, and I may let my civil engineer, Rebecca Corbett, is our designer, and she's doing all the designs, and it is in the process.
Okay, so you have made application with state, Health Department, ADQ. Okay, again, like I said earlier tonight, it'd be nice to have those permits in place when we look at the large-scale development, if possible.
Yeah, bet.
Okay, other questions for the applicant from board? Okay, is there anybody here that would like to ask questions on, public comments on the pre-LSD that has been presented on this project? I know you just did it, if you would, please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, that's fine, no big deal, no big deal. I have students, I repeat myself all the time. Jared Phillips, 16704 Matier Road. Actually, this is a question born purely out of ignorance. Who, so if Mr. Walker's gonna help to pave the road and pay for the road, who's gonna ultimately be responsible for maintaining that road?
It will be a county road, the county's, the county's, Washington County Road Department will maintain the road.
So if I'm understanding it correctly, then a private citizen is gonna encourage the county to pave the road, which according to EPA studies, paved roads are gonna have longer, or are gonna have a higher maintenance cost over their lifespan, then the, the taxpayers of the county are then gonna be subsidizing a private access road functionally.
It's not a private access road, it'd be a county highway.
But it's becoming a private, it's being paid for private use, for a private reason, right? You understand kind of my logic here? So I'm just curious, how do we, how does the, how does the county then justify that increased tax burden?
It's increased safety for the residents of the county, and it's also increased revenue from tax, real estate taxes that will increase based on this development, future development on the road.
Right, okay, and, but, so again, I'll refer you to the comments I had earlier about, we know that, you know, from national statistics, that that, we won't have a, a net increase here for the county, we'll actually lose money on it. So I'm just curious, how, how would y'all, how do y'all, as the planning commission, justify this when you go to take this to the quorum court or, or out to the taxpayer?
It's, again, it's, it's for, it's for safety, it'll be a paved county road for safety of the residents, and it's paid for by development that comes along and pays real estate taxes.
So with all due respect, then you don't justify it, because you can't.
I'm not gonna argue with you. I don't know, I don't, with all due respect, but I've not seen the study you're quoting either.
Right, right, I'm happy to share that with you, I've shared it with the planning commission many times over the last several years, and so, yeah, all right. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it, thank you. All right, any other comments? If you would, please state your name and address for the record, and I'm sorry.
Yes, sir, Larry Walker.
Keep it short for me.
15053 Walker Road. Hey, I drive that road every day, I feed cattle on that road every day, and the county is spending a fortune, because that ward war, that road washes out every day, so the new improvement of the road will actually save the county money.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. All right, any other questions or comments? If you would, please, state your name and address for the record.
Josh Hale, 15564 Prairie View Road. As far as the road goes, safety, again, I think I said earlier that I think it's safer is, is less speed, there's gonna be more speed with a paved road. It washes out because there's two, the road washes out because there's actually two culverts missing from two driveways, that's the reason it washes out, I live on the road. It's the, the two right next to me, and the water hits and it goes over the road and washes out the road, that's the reason the road washes out right now. So my question more about the road too is, I think from what my, talking with the county road department before, is if neighbors want to get together and ask for a road to get approved to, to be paved, they have to get every person on that road to sign and say, I, I'm willing to, you know, I agree with this. If it's not already on the list to be paved by the county, and they want to propose it, it has to have everybody. But yet it seems like if a private citizen wants to help pay for that, well then that goes out the window, and the citizens on that road don't get a voice in that. And so that's a concern I have also. That's how I've understood in the past, when I've asked, including a month or so ago, that's what they said, is that if you want to ask for a road to be paved, they need every citizen on that road to agree to it. So I just, it just, I just wonder why private citizen can kind of override that.
Okay, I would ask you to defer that question to the county, county attorney or the road department.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right, any other comments? If not, I'll close it to public comment, bring it back to the board. Questions, comments of the applicant or action?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the Grand at Willow Springs pre-LSD per staff comments.
We got a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
We got a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, appreciate your time. All right, moving on, I believe that's the last item, other business, discussion of current development, planning department activities, reminder of board meeting, next one being May 4th, and the following being June 8th.
We're still updating, working on updating our like code of ordinances and like maybe posting them like online soon, as soon as the codification company is done with it.
Okay, appreciate it very much. Any other staff comments?
None.
Appreciate your work tonight, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make that motion to adjourn this meeting.
We got a motion?
I'll second it.
And a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, thank you, staff.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir.
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 Thank you, sir.